All right, good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm Arlen Singhwall, Community Development Director. And tonight, I have the honor of opening up the Planning Commission meeting until we have a chance to elect a new chairperson and vice-chairperson. So first, just to confirm, we have a quorum. All commissioners are present this evening. And as tradition, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. And I have asked Planning Manager Kim Fowler to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic of which is advanced, one nation under God, made immortal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. So next on the agenda is Planning Commissioner announcements. And although I'm not a planning commissioner, I would like to use this section of the agenda to welcome our new planning commissioners, Commissioner Defazio and Commissioner Witkowski. I also want to take a moment to thank the outgoing planning commissioners, Bill Roshan and Mike Rodriguez, for their service to the community. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Commissioner, for Commissioner announcements, per the agenda. Yeah, I see heads shaking. No? So no Commissioner announcements. And now, we get to elect the chair and vice-chair. So allow the commission to deliberate and look for a motion to nominate and elect a chairperson and then vice-chairperson.
I offer to nominate Eric as chairperson.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Are we ready for a roll call?
Do you guys want to discuss?
No need to discuss?
Nope.
What about, do we do the vice?
One at a time. Okay, one at a time. So we will go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Defazio.
Eric as chair. I'm good with Eric as chair, yes.
Okay. Commissioner King.
Yes, I'm also good with that.
I went out of alphabetical order. I am sorry, Commissioner Ingraffia.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Witkowski?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
So we have our election of our chairperson. Chairperson Meyer. And then, let's just go ahead and all conduct the next part. So election of a vice-chairperson if we have a motion for a vice-chair.
I don't, I'm on a motion yet, but, can we discuss a little?
Absolutely, yes.
I don't, I just wanted to hear from our new commissioners if they have any specific thoughts or desires, or I'm happy to otherwise elect or nominate someone.
I feel like either one of you should have priority on that position, so between you and Joe. Maybe Mary?
Yeah, I'm aligned. I'm not interested in pursuing a vice-chair at this time.
Well then, I would like to nominate Joe. Any second.
I was about to say, I have absolutely no desire to be the co-chairman, but I would accept the nomination.
I'll second.
Seniority.
Sort of a motion and second. Any deliberation, discussion?
Roll call again. Commissioner Defazio.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Chairperson Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Witkowski.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Now, we can officially do the change of seats, and Commissioner Meyer can lead us through the rest of the meeting this evening, starting with public comment as the next agenda item. And congratulations, Chairperson Meyer.
Yeah, you might want to hold that applause, you don't know. So now is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of Morro Bay and currently serve on the City Council. And I'm also the appointed liaison to the Planning Commission, appointed by the City Council. So I'm very happy to be here, and I'm happy to play the role as liaison between the Council and the Planning Commission. I want to echo some of the words that our Director Singhwall mentioned. Thank you to our outgoing planning commissioners, Bill Roshan and Mike Rodriguez, for their service over the last four years. Greatly appreciated. Thank you also for the continued service of Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner King, and Commissioner Ingraffia. And a very warm welcome to Commissioner Defazio and Commissioner Witkowski. So I know that with this group in front of me right now, that you will do a fine job as planning commissioners for the city of Morro Bay. As liaison, if there's anything that I can do for you, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. My chief duty as liaison is to simply communicate what you do here to the City Council, but I'm also here to be in assistance in any role that I can for you. So again, thank you for your service to Morro Bay. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? AGP, do we have any raised hands for public comment on the agenda?
Hi, Chairmeyer. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be closing public comment. And then, we don't have anything on the consent agenda. We don't have any public hearings, so we're going to new business. Arlen.
All right. So our one item this evening is consideration of appointment of the Planning Commission's representative on the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee. I think as the commission is aware, the city received a $750,000 local planning assistance grant from the California Coastal Commission to update the city's waterfront master plan. The waterfront master plan was first adopted in 1996 and has not been updated since. It is part of the city's local coastal program, so it's part of our official land use regulations for development in the coastal zone, specifically on the waterfront, of course. The waterfront master plan, really at its core, it's the city's vision for land use, circulation, development, and infrastructure on the waterfront areas of the city. It's also an implementation document, so the design guidelines chapter of the waterfront master plan has actual development standards and design guidelines that planning staff applies when reviewing development projects and that the commission reviews when considering development projects. So the current waterfront master plan extends from Tytlen's Park north to Moro Rock. The Council Direction and Coastal Commission grant for the waterfront master plan update specifies that it would, the boundaries would extend further to the north to also include the former wastewater treatment plant site. There is a policy in the current general plan, Plan Morro Bay, which states that a master plan needs to be prepared for the former wastewater treatment plant site before any new development or land use could be established there. And so this is an opportunity to satisfy that requirement by incorporating that site into the waterfront master plan. So I'm going to list off some of the main components of the waterfront master plan, just to give you an idea of the scope of work and kind of what you'd be getting yourself into if you are the selected member. The WOMPAC is what we're calling, Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee for short. So again, it's a vision and goals for future development, land use and circulation on the Embarcadero. It'll include an updated sea level rise analysis, vulnerability assessment, and adaptation plan, a plaza plan and parking relocation plan for redeveloping the street end parking lots on the west side of the Embarcadero to public plazas. It'll include master planning of the former wastewater treatment plant and a decommissioned power plant property, and identification of public facilities, infrastructure, and spaces needed to support the working waterfront, commercial fishing industry, and harbor, and a consideration of waterfront infrastructure of offshore wind development that was specifically directed by the Council to be included in the scope of work. That's a real high-level, kind of basic list of some of the major components. I'm currently preparing the requests for proposals that we're going to send out next week for consultants to bid on preparing the plan, and it's quite extensive. There are many more facets and components to the waterfront master plan. So it is a really exciting opportunity, a very significant planning document. I'm again outlining that vision for the waterfront. So on January 14th, the Council approved the formation of the WOMPAC to provide stakeholder input and policy direction to work with staff and the consultant on developing the waterfront master plan. Ultimately, the work of the WOMPAC and the consultant and staff is going to come to the Planning Commission in the form of a recommended draft plan, and the Planning Commission will still have your normal purview of reviewing that draft document and making a recommendation to the City Council. So the WOMPAC doesn't at all replace the Planning Commission's role. It's just WOMPAC is more of a steering committee, working with staff to make some of those difficult policy decisions as we move forward in preparing a draft to present to the Planning Commission. As directed by Council, the WOMPAC consists of seven members, so one appointee from each of the five existing city advisory boards. So far, I've gone to the Recreation and Park Commission and received an appointee of James Costanzo's, the appointee from Rec and Park Commission. And I went to CFAC, the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and Stephen Peck was the representative appointed by CFAC to be on the WOMPAC. In addition to one member from each of the five existing advisory committees, there also will be a representative from the Embarcadero Master Leaseholders Group and a representative from the National Estuary Program, NEP, or a similar environmental group. So I'm in the process of scheduling meetings with all the other groups to get their appointments to this seven-member WOMPAC. That's really my staff presentation, just to give you an idea of the level of staff commitment. So this is a two-year process, potentially longer. I envision having monthly meetings with the WOMPAC. The first meeting would likely occur in late March or early April to assist staff to develop the kind of final scope of work that we put into the consultant contract. So what I'm thinking is, we're going to release the RFP next week. We'll get proposals in, we'll review proposals, select a consultant, and then have a draft scope of work that we present to the WOMPAC. And I'm sure with all of the different areas of expertise from the WOMPAC members, we'll end up making alterations to that scope of work. And then that will, we go back, negotiate the final scope with the consultant and bring that back to, or bring that to the City Council for approval in April. And I'm available for questions.
I feel like if one of you three...
Mike?
Yeah, again, I feel like if one of you three would like to take on that position, since you've been here longer, I would give priority to you. It's something that I'd be interested in doing as well, and Mary might be interested in it also.
Yeah, I'd be interested in this, too. I'm really passionate about the waterfront master plan, just from my background on the Harbor Advisory Board, and would be interested in a way to like, get my feet wet with Planning Commission point of view and design guidelines while also leveraging my past experience. So I'd be interested.
Joe, Asia?
Is there, and there's no room for two commissioners. They wanted to stick to a seven-member committee.
So the Council was pretty specific on the makeup of the WOMPAC. So it would be one from each advisory committee.
Certainly, I have an interest in being on the committee, but it's not an overwhelming interest. I'm certainly willing to defer to Mary, if she'd like to be on it. I don't know what else to say. I don't want to, I have no opinion, so I'm looking for volunteers. So far, I have, it sounds like I have, we have one volunteer, but I don't know, or we have two volunteers?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested, but I also think it'd be a great opportunity for a new commissioner, so.
Yeah. You know, I stand corrected. I think, I was very impressed with your interview before the City Council. And I would certainly be, you know, confident in you being a member of that committee. I would defer to you without slightest hesitation. I'm leaving it on, and it's kind of like, if you...
Well, I'm fine with whatever. I'm happy to contribute ideas, not as a committee member, if...
All righty.
Or as a...
Well, then, do we have a motion, then, to... And let me say as well, from time to time, I've expressed opinions that relate to the waterfront. And so, you know, maybe we could just have a brief conversation, and I could let you know what I'm thinking, and you could feel free to embrace it or dismiss it.
Yeah, definitely. And it sounds like it'll be a two-year process, so I think as part of that, I could come back. And I don't know if it's appropriate to bring reports of kind of where we're at with WOMPAC discussions and seek feedback and have discussions on that with the Planning Commission, in Planning Commission meetings.
That's a, that's a good point. So I'm thinking the WOMPAC representative for each advisory body would also basically play the role as the liaison between the WOMPAC and the advisory body they represent. So that'd be part of the responsibilities, to check back in with the rest of the commission.
At the beginning of each meeting, we ask if the planning commissioners have any sort of reports to make to us, and that's where that sort of information would come forward. Well, then, I would look for a motion from somebody. Do we need it in the form of a motion, or do we just need to vote, or do you have any?
So let's go ahead and do a motion and a second, and then we'll probably just do a voice vote.
I move that we nominate Mary as the representative.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries 5-0.
Great, all right. Thank you very much. Well, again, this is an exciting opportunity, and I look forward to having Commissioner Witkowski on the WOMPAC.
Then, the next item on the agenda would be any planning commissioner comments on future agenda items, or that sort of thing? I do have some comments. And one would be to add my own personal thanks to the, to the work of Mark Rodriguez and Bill Roshan over the last four years, because it's been educational and valuable, and I think to the whole community. And particularly with respect to Bill, you know, I want to point out the resources that he brought to the job. And I think most people are aware of this, but the fact that he had been a Planning Commission chairman in Los Angeles City for 10 years, and the fact that he had been an architect for multiple decades, and the fact that he had especially in historical preservation, and the fact that he either initiated, or with several other people initiated, some things in the city that I think particularly, particularly valuable. The report that should bring some specificity to additional community benefits with respect to the Embarcadero, the effort to do something useful and imaginative in repurposing the old elementary school. What else was I going to say?
Historical, historical...
Yeah, the historical preservation, to have a historical preservation ordinance sometime in the near future. The downtown design district, the possibility of form-based funding. The examples are, oh, the recent precedence of the libertine pub and the, what I'll call the cottages at the end of the Embarcadero. That is attaching as additional community benefits on the Embarcadero. The preservation of viewship. He was instrumental in taking those projects from the entire second story and actually reducing some of the second story and preserving some of the viewships. So I think it's a remarkable, remarkable history of accomplishments in getting us to think creatively. And on a private note, to disabuse anybody of the notion, the fact that he's here does not mean that he had in any way lost interest with the work of the Planning Commission, but I'll leave it at that. The other thing I wanted to say, and this, this came to me with respect to the recent appeal of the, what I'll call, the cottages property. I was not aware in the slightest that we, as a body, could deny a property, a project, and then the applicant could make some major modifications to that proposal, albeit some of the modifications for what we recommended. Call that an appeal of the project that was before us, even though it was now significantly informally changed, and then go to the City Council without having to return to the Planning Commission and have it, his appeal accepted and won. So it strikes me that, again, so I'd like to emphasize to this body that on the rare occasions when we opt to deny a proposal, and it really is a rare occasion, that we be really comprehensive in our criticism of the project and really explicit about all things, not just the things of obvious importance, the things that are obviously wrong. Because what can happen is the applicant can then modify his project, accept some of our cures, dismiss some of the others, and say essentially, "I've changed it in such a manner that now I'm doing exactly what the Planning Commission wants." So that's all, just a word of caution. We should be really, really explicit. I, for one, was concentrating on that project, on efforts to not obscure or to free up as much of the viewshed as would otherwise be obscured, and I wasn't really paying that much attention to some of the aspects, thinking it would come back to us. The other thing is, this is a business of an appeal. And my notion of an appeal is when an appeal is made, there are two sides to advocate on the appeal. I think that, again, on those rare occasions when a project is denied and it may go to appeal, or in fact, when there's a prospect for it going to appeal, that we should select a member of the Planning Commission who was in agreement with the denial to represent the thinking of the Planning Commission as an advocate for the Planning Commission when it goes on appeal. I just want you guys to think about that. I think that's all I have to say. Let's see, I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thinking that, like, when we make a denial, we could be intentional about writing our reasons for denial as part of that, the staff report, or the agenda minutes, or whatever they're called.
In that, wasn't it an agendaized conversation? Should we perhaps deflect this to a future discussion that's agendaized, so that the public can participate in this process? I kind of think that's the way this should go, as opposed to us round-tabling something that's not on the agenda. But I do agree that it's an important item to discuss, but I think maybe we should agendaize it as a future item later on, a future agenda. That was my, I didn't intend to say anything more than I have, but we should just talk about it. I think it's a really important discussion, especially the ideas you brought up. Yeah. No offense. Any thoughts, do you want to, I think we'd be interested to hear a little bit about your backgrounds, maybe, or just a brief, like, your little pitch, your intros? If you got one. Mary, would you like to start?
My elevator pitch?
Yeah.
Or introduction? Yeah, my name is Mary Witkowski. I'm, my family's been in Slow County for five generations. I left the area after attending Slow High to go to the Naval Academy, was on the East Coast, served as a naval officer for a period of time, and then left the Navy and spent time in tech at Google and Amazon. Also have done science and technology consulting and have a small consulting company and live here in Morro Bay, have two kids. And I most recently served on the Harbor Advisory Board and was looking, had interest in serving and potentially having more impact for the community on the Planning Commission. So excited to be here.
Tony?
Excuse me. Yeah, my name's Tony Defazio. I moved to Los Osos, Morro Bay area, excuse me, in 2003, and went to Questa College for architecture, and then I transferred into Cal Poly and got my degree in architecture in 2010. I went up to the Bay Area for a couple of years and worked in public school architecture work. At the time, the economy was pretty bad, and that was one of the only project types that was still being funded. And I was up there for about three years, moved back down here in 2013. Worked for architecture firms. I've been practicing architecture for the last 15 years primarily. And then the last four years, I got back into residential construction, and now I'm currently a superintendent for a commercial builder managing public school work.
Great, thank you. Arlen, did you have any comments from your side of this that you haven't already made? Or we, I think you mentioned something you wanted...
Oh, yeah. So I do have the Community Development Director comments that I have prepared, if we're done with the Commissioner, future agenda items. So addressing or giving an update on the Bayside Landing project that Commissioner Ingraffia was speaking to. So last Tuesday, the City Council did approve a 5-0, a revised version of the project that eliminated the southernmost second-story hotel rooms, going from three hotel rooms to two hotel rooms on the second floor. You know, I explained to Council, and I'll explain the same to the commission, that, you know, first, in my experience, it's not uncommon to have an applicant change a project between Planning Commission and then appeal at the City Council. That happens fairly commonly. I made it clear to the Council that in recommending the revised project, staff was in no way suggesting that, you know, the Planning Commission would have supported that revised project. And, you know, in addition to that, the revised project did address a lot of the most kind of critical concerns that we heard during the Planning Commission deliberation about the building height, massing, and scale. So I think in the end, you know, the Planning Commission's work on the project and the Planning Commission's very thoughtful consideration and the direction of the subcommittee resulted in a better project in the end, and I'm very thankful for the Planning Commission's role in that process. I know that the Council and the community is, as well. As far as the idea of another future agenda item to kind of talk about the process, when, say, the Planning Commission does deny a project, I'm, you know, very much focused on process as a planner, so I really welcome that opportunity to have that discussion, maybe a workshop or study session with the commission where we just have a kind of open dialogue and make sure that we're on the same page. I think that the commission shouldn't be surprised after their final action on a project. And I'm hearing there was some surprise on how things transpired with the appeal. And so, again, I think, I agree it'd be helpful to just talk that through and make sure we're all on the same page on how that process normally works and on different options that are available. I mean, for example, in my previous, you know, experience, if we have a project where we're recommending approval and then the commission, you know, votes to deny it, we will often pull up, we'll take a break, we'll prepare revised findings that staff fills, represents the kind of sentiment of the commission and the denial decision, and pull them up on the screen and look at them together, just to be 100% sure that that actually reflects the sentiments of the majority on the commission. So there's options like that that we can explore, again, to make sure that commissioners aren't surprised in the future, like happened this past time.
And I want to be clear, the element of surprise was on my part, but it was due entirely to my ignorance. I should have known, perhaps, that things can be changed on appeal. I certainly could have read the file, in which case I would have seen that things had been, had been changed. And I agree completely with the director in terms of his effort to present a sort of unbiased presentation of what our views, I don't mean to disparage that at all.
I appreciate that.
I didn't hear it as disparagement. I don't think we heard it as disparagement. I think we heard it as maybe a way for us all to learn how to further that discussion within our own advisory body discussions, rather than seeing it...
within our own advisory body discussions rather than seeing it happen afterwards. Maybe we'll get to that.
Alright, so I have a few other updates on my list here. So also at the same meeting, the council voted unanimously to adopt a 45-day urgency ordinance to prohibit applications for best facilities within the city limits. That is an urgency ordinance, so it's initially effective for 45 days. The set expiration date, I believe, is March 14th, and we're going to come back to the city council on February 25th, so before the expiration date, to bring an ordinance that would extend the urgency ordinance for a total time period of two years. So if that's voted on by the council, the urgency ordinance prohibiting processing the best facility applications will be extended to January 28th, 2027. And during that, up to two-year timeframe, assuming the extension ordinance is approved by council, staff would work with the council to get a framework and direction for a permanent ordinance to regulate best facilities that would most likely involve a zoning code amendment, and that would be within Planning Commission's purview to review the draft zoning code amendment and make a recommendation to the city council on that.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So how does that process, assuming the ordinance is extended for two years, how might that impact the waterfront master planning and the master plan that was initiated on the property currently owned by Vistra?
So there's a lot, a lot to discuss there. So I guess I would first start by explaining that Vistra has asked us to put their application on pause, and they are no longer basically funding the city's work effort to prepare the power plant property master plan. So that is on pause per Vistra's request, although I did send a letter to Vistra, I think on January 2nd, basically clarifying that pause is not an official terminology used in our zoning code, and so we're waiting for clarification from Vistra on what their actual intent is when saying they want to pause their application. Do they mean withdraw? Do they mean something else? So we're waiting to hear back from Vistra on that. As far as, you mentioned also waterfront master plan, so that would include the power plant property. So any existing background information that's already been prepared with the, I'll call it, the Vistra version of the power plant property master plan, that existing information would be used to the extent it makes sense to incorporate, so we're not duplicating work there for background information. As far as implications of the urgency ordinance, that's something that staff is kind of working through with the city attorney's office, so I can't really comment on that.
Does that conclude your?
So I have just a couple more items. So just a real brief update on Morro Elementary School site, that has been in the news lately with the school district moving forward, with the process of, you know, surplusing the property and ultimately putting it on the open market. There's been a lot of, you know, interest in, you know, what is the city's vision for the property and the general plan, what are the zoning code requirements, what could be the possible tools for preservation of the 1936 schoolhouse building on the property? So last Thursday here in the Vets Hall, we hosted a public information session, about 30 people attended, and I think I thought it was a good discussion about planning and zoning and process and sequel, my favorite topic, so I just wanted to let the commission know about that. And then finally, just upcoming agenda items. So our next meeting scheduled is February 18th. We have one project currently on the agenda. It's located at 460 Arle, it's the Rio Grande RV Park proposal for eight new stalls at the RV Park. On March 4th, we have two items currently on the agenda, and one of those items is actually going to be a presentation from the city manager, Yvonne Kimball, on the city council's goals for the city. And I'm also, at that meeting, going to give a presentation that I've been calling our Community Development Department Priorities Report, which would go over the department workload, all of our current planning projects that we're processing, and our priority long-range planning projects. And then this will be an opportunity for us to also hear from the commission on any other ideas that you would like to recommend for planning staff to bring to council for consideration in our Community Development Department work program. And I know those ideas tend to come up sort of on a one-off basis at Planning Commission meetings, when there's ideas for future agenda items, and I think this kind of Goals and Priorities meeting would be a good opportunity to really just kind of focus in on that and for the commissioners to provide input, and then we can bring it up to the council, and the council can decide if they would like to add that to their priorities for the Community Development Department within our resources and other competing priorities. Finally, my last announcement, so we do have a date set for the Downtown Design District Public Forum. So the city council formed a subcommittee for Downtown Design District. There were several meetings even before I started with the city. The subcommittee met, I don't remember the exact date off the top of my head, but towards the end of last year, put together the final recommendations, and we got direction from council to have a public forum where we invite the public to present the final recommendations of that work effort. And that is planned for March 18th here at Planning Commission. And that concludes my staff updates.
Great, thank you. I think we're at the end of our agenda then, and so we will be adjourning to the next meeting, which is again February 18th at 6:00 PM at this location, I think. Thank you.
Wow.